Good evening, and welcome to everyone to tonight's meeting. Today is December the fifteenth, twenty twenty. The time is now six P M. Regular meeting in the city council, the city of Trinidad will now come to order. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag. And the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. The liberty and justice for all.
Just to let everybody know that anyone who is listening in tonight, when it comes to the petitions or communications oral written, if you want to be recognized, please speak up, raise your hand.
Thanks Bobby.
You too. It's time we like to have a roll call. All right.
Set off.
Here.
Here. Ogletree?
Here.
You?
Here.
Here. Item two approval of the agenda, does council have any changes that they would like to make to the agenda tonight? Not could have a motion please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Call vote. Think you're on mute Eli?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shue? Greego?
Yes. Item three policy items and staff reports. Item three A introduction of Bob Just, Public Works Director, Mr. Valentine, could you please do that?
You bet Mayor, thank you. Before I do that, I would ask that if you are not speaking, if you would please mute your device or phone. We're getting a lot of feedback. With that Mayor, I just, I see Bob Just is online if you have any questions or if he would like to say anything. But Bob comes to us with a lot of experience and I don't, I shouldn't say how long ago he actually worked for the city. And now he's back with us and we're really excited to have him join our team. So with that, I don't know if council has any questions or concerns or if Bob would like to speak up. Go ahead Bob. And it looks like his, he's trying to connect to audio. So if he, if he can't connect in, there you go.
Mike, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Mayor, member of council, glad to be here, glad to join the team. When I interviewed with Mike and staff, I basically told him I see a lot of positive things that are happening. And anyway, I can contribute and I'm just glad to be on staff and I'm open for questions.
Okay, anybody in council have any questions for Mr. Just?
All I have to say is welcome aboard Bob, worked with you for many years, good to have you onboard.
Thank you sir.
Anyone else? Hey Bob, I just gonna say-
Glad to have you Bob.
Thank you Karen.
Anyone else? Hey Bob, this is Phil, I just wanted to mention and say, you know, welcome aboard. I know from working with you and in the past, your experience, I believe is going to be a tremendous help. City Hall and community, so welcome aboard and we'll just, like you said, there's a lot of good things happening. And just help to contribute to the betterment of our, of the city of Trinidad.
Thank you Mayor.
Okay, let's go on to item four petitions or communications oral written. Item four is Dr. Rhonda Epper from the Trinidad State Junior College. Dr. Epper, would you go ahead please?
Sure, can everyone hear me okay?
I can.
Great, thank you. Well, good evening everyone, Mayor Rico, council members. Thank you for allowing me to join you this evening. I am here to bring your attention to an issue that's been under discussion for quite some time within Trinidad state as well as a couple of our sister colleges in Colorado. And that is the issue of our name. And we are proposing during the next legislative session to drop the word junior from our name. We believe that this name is outdated and it is inhibiting our work to try and grow student enrollment. And I'll refer you to the handout that I believe was sent out and it's titled Colorado's Junior Colleges. And if you don't have it, I'll just explain to you a little bit about what's on there. Our system office as well as myself has been doing a little bit of research about junior college names. And we found that out of about fifteen hundred two-year institutions throughout the nation, it's actually fourteen hundred and sixty-five, only fifteen are remaining that have the word junior in their titles. Twelve of them are public and three of them are private. And out of those twelve public, three of those are located in Colorado. And that's Trinidad State Junior College, Otero Junior College and Northeastern Junior Colleges. And another thing that we learned in our research is that most colleges that have junior in their names were established very early on, so in the nineteen twenties, thirties and forties. And that was the case with the three that are in Colorado, with Trinidad State of course being the oldest, established in nineteen twenty-five. Whereas when you think about community colleges, they came about later on and were mostly established in the nineteen sixties and nineteen seventies. And that was during the great expansion of higher education following the G I bill. And community colleges also represented a broadening of the mission from what was primarily a transfer mission to also include a lot more workforce education, community education, adult literacy and so on. And that's what we see reflected in Colorado with most of our community colleges that are named as such being founded in the nineteen sixties and nineteen seventies. But the reason for the proposed name change at this time is really quite simply that we need to attract more students. And the name junior carries with it a negative connotation for many students who may question, what does it mean, what is a junior college? Are we something less than a real college? Is that in contrast to a senior college? Is it something that's between high school and college? And our market, as you may know, in higher education is every year becoming more and more competitive. And we have declining high school enrollments in our rural communities. And we just need to really be able to position ourselves as a modern institution with highly reputable programs, which we have. And in fact, we're now authorized to offer selected bachelor's degrees in certain applied fields. And so the name junior really has become something of a liability. And there's also something of a stigma that's associated with having junior in, in your name. And so we want to remove that so our students can feel proud of the institution they're attending or considering attending. So changing our name does require a change in statute because community college roles and missions are defined in statute and as well as our names. So we're going to be supporting legislation that will be introduced in the next legislative session in January to change the name of all three junior colleges in Colorado. And it's simply going to be to drop junior from our name and our name will be simply Trinidad State College. So I wanted to bring this to you today to ask for your support and also see if there are any concerns that I can address.
Okay, I'd like to say typically, you know, when we have keep communications or particularly like this, we don't address them from council. But in this particular case, I think we need to allow because this is such an important issue for you and for the community. We will start off with Ms. Greego, do you have any more questions for Dr. Epper?
I don't have any questions, but I think it's a wonderful idea. And really with technology as it is, we're not a junior college anymore. We're connected to higher institutions of learning, so I, I think it's a great idea. I just have one question, Dr. Epper. Will that go to the vote of the, of the people or will it just be legislative?
It will be legislative. Right now, the plan is that it will be introduced in the senate with prime sponsorship from our new Senator Cleve Simpson. And it will be co-sponsored in the house by Representative Donald Valdez. And we're hoping to get legislative sponsorship from the representatives in the other areas as well.
Would you need a letter from the state be advising that we're in agreement or we support this name change? Would that help any or is it not necessary?
You know, I am not sure. I need to talk to our lobbyists to find out kind of what their strategy is going to be for this bill. Right now, what I'm hearing is they think that this will have support in the legislature. It's something that, that our legislator, legislators can do for rural community colleges at a time when there's not a lot of money and this won't have a fiscal note. And there, we do think there could be some opposition potentially coming from a university, one or more universities, but more than likely one that's in close proximity to our campus in Alamosa. The other two junior colleges don't have a four-year institution in close proximity. So and it's, it's really, we're not looking to change our mission. We're not looking to offer any other advanced degrees. And that's typically where you would get four-year institutions objecting is if we were trying to offer degrees that they offer. As you may recall, when we received authorization to offer the B S N, the Bachelor of Science in Nursing, there was opposition from four-year institutions. A name change is not as threatening because we aren't actively competing against them or doing anything different. It's really just a name change. But there, there is a potential that we'll have some opposition coming from a four-year institution nearby. So I'll let you know.
Thank you, I have an-
Mr. DeBono, go ahead. Here, you need to unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Dr. Epper, thank you, I think that's a great idea. Will, will this constitute an increase in tuition? I know, you know, all the institutions have to raise tuition every now and then. But will this be a, a pretty big increase in tuition?
No, there would be no increase in tuition associated with the name change.
Okay.
In fact, there's really, there will be minimal costs for Trinidad because we've already gone through a rebranding process a few years ago where we've tried to minimize the word junior in our name. So if you notice our logos mostly just say Trinidad State now, all of our signage says Trinidad State. I think the other two institutions will have to change their signage. There is one sign here on campus still on the front of the Berg Building, junior is of course etched in stone as you may recall. And we have some ideas about how, how we might deal with that and put something that's very tasteful, maybe a metal sign kind of to overlay that so we don't destroy what's behind it to preserve the history. But we'll put some, some thought into that. And of course, we're assuming it will pass and hoping it will pass, but we won't know that until it actually is approved by the legislature.
That'd be great if that would materialize, I'm all for it, long overdue.
Thank you.
Ms. Ogletree?
Thank you, Dr. Epper. And, and I don't know if the rest of council knows, but I was privileged to join the Trinidad State Advisory Council recently. So I heard about this and I think it's a great idea. I think it's going to help the college to maximize how it can be used in this area of the state. And I, I think it will draw more students and possibly older students too, who may have been confused about the junior college designation. So I'm in favor of it, I look forward to, to seeing what the future holds. And I hope that my presence on that council will be a help in improving and increasing communication between the city and the college so that we can work together.
Thank you, and we are privileged and pleased to have you on our advisory council and looking forward to that partnership.
Mr. Goodall?
All I have is, you have my full support, of course, sounds like all of council's support. So good job and good luck moving forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Shue? Go ahead and unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I don't have anything other than good luck and I, I think it's a great idea.
Dr. Epper, from my point of view, I think that, I think it's a good move. And anything that we can do to help support you if necessary, we, it sounds like as a council, we are in all, all in agreement. I do know that it's going to take a legislative process. And if you begin to encounter any issues, we do have a lobbyist ourselves up in Denver that I believe that council would probably not, I, I think it would be okay if just ask us for that help. And I think that we could have our lobbyists kind of talk up in Denver to help that process if it's necessary. So anything that we can do in that regardless, no, good luck with the, the name change. And I think, I think it is a good move.
Thank you so much for your support, really appreciate it. Thank you for your time this evening and happy holidays.
Same to you, bye-bye. Okay, the only other thing I've got as far as communications and petitions is just to let you know, I got a letter a while back from Nancy Kirkland from the Legacy. And it says hooray and hallelujah, I don't really know exactly what we did, says thank you, thank you, thank you. Just to let you know telecommunications services have, have improved tremendously in our part of the city. We don't know what was done or by whom, but whatever it seems to be working. I work in lines as well as Comcast, Xfinity technicians have apparently, when we started talking- Even through the recent high wind gust, TV, phone, internet service has held up well. Please extend our perform, thanks to the city and Xfinity workers well helped us out, to the prior telecommunications mess. Thank you again for your dedicated service to the community in these perilous times. Good wishes, good holiday wishes to you and all of your families. Gratefully, Nancy Kirkland, she is also carbon copied Georgette Senator Stephen, who's the administrator of the Legacy. And you know, we've had, these other two items, I, I'll just bring it up at the appropriate time. When we start talking to something else down the road. So at this point, we'll go into item five consent agenda approval. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of December one, twenty twenty. And special meeting of December the first, twenty twenty and December the tenth, twenty twenty. Item B removal of Jonathan, Jonathan Barneski from the Historic Preservation Commission. Evidently he has not lived up to the expectations that is needed for that commission. Item C approval of the bills for one million, two hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and five cents. Item D approval of payroll, December the twelfth, twenty twenty through December the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty in the amount of three hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred, six hundred and seventy-one dollars and twelve cents. Could have a motion please?
Don't move.
Have a second.
Second.
Call vote please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shue? Rico?
Yes. Under item six miscellaneous business, six A resolution committee reserve funds held by the city of Trinidad. Could I have a motion please?
Don't move.
Second? Do you have a second? Okay. Discussion, Mr. Valentine? Mr. Valentine, do you want to just hold this part of the discussion or Cheryl?
Actually Mayor, I will defer to Cheryl to, for any questions. But this is the discussion we had with city council during our work session. And, and we were, staff was able to line out several of the projects, although not fully funded. We committed, directed these funds there. And with that, I defer to Cheryl if there's questions.
Cheryl, do you have any comments?
Just a brief discussion of how we got to this point. As a reminder, we closed out two thousand and nineteen with the general fund reporting twelve point two million dollars in unassigned fund balance. Twenty twenty is projecting to record an ending fund balance of fifteen point seven million. And this is unassigned fund balance. The reason for the increase from twelve point two to fifteen point seven, obviously because of COVID, staff cut back tremendously and we curbed our expenses. But in the meantime, we still collected significant increases of sales tax and marijuana sales tax. So that's where we are with an increased unassigned fund balance. Therefore, that gives us eight point four million dollars for council, a recommendation for council to commit. In the resolution, you'll see the city projects were broken out between the Riverwalk improvements for a million dollars, exit fourteen improvements of eight hundred and nine thousand dollars, West Main Street, two point six million dollars, the covered swimming pool, one point two million dollars, excuse me, one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Economic Development Land acquisition, nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. And then uncompensated absences, one million dollars, Eagle Rock subdivision, three hundred thousand dollars. And then fleet of five hundred thousand dollars for a total of eight point four million. If we commit that fund balance, that should leave us approximately six point five million dollars remaining in the budget as unassigned for those emergencies that occur. And then to cover our twenty-five percent fund balance reserve, which is to, which is for three months worth of annual expenses. Are there any questions?
Let's go ahead and take questions from the council, Ms. Greego?
I have a general question. If we assign these funds to these specific projects, what happens if one of them doesn't come to fruition? What happens if that money can reassign it to a project?
So what, what I envision to happen is that at budget time every year, council should probably visit those resolution to see if we need to maneuver the funds into different line items, subtract a project, add a project. I believe budget time would be the best time because at this time, I kind of have a projection of where we're going to be. So that if we collect more unassigned fund balance, council would be able to direct that. Of course, if a project pops up in the middle of the year, I mean, there's nothing stopping council from redirecting funds at that time or changing their mind for projects. Does that answer your question?
I guess we should drop that.
I'm sorry, thank you, yes.
Mr. DeBono?
Not really any questions right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Ogletree?
I have one quick question. I noticed that the amount that is designated for a covered swimming pool is one point two five million. And I thought our estimate was more like six million on that. Is, did we get kind of an updated idea of what that would cost or is that just a placeholder?
I can, I can jump in here Cheryl. So basically the six billion was kind of the projected cost in, when we built the pool to have it all covered in, in doing some estimation and, and looking at it. To cover the pool only as is, we, we adjusted that down. And we're, we're hoping that with this one million, two fifty, that we can get that done. And if not leverage that with some grant money to get a covered pool. So that was my ad in the beginning for throwing out that six million dollar estimate. So the hope is we can, we can get that done. I know a lot of, a lot of people have asked for it. So of course, we will be going out for engineering services and such and get a really more refined budget for that. But it is our feeling that one point two five will get that done.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had.
Yes.
Mr. Goodall?
Um, no questions, it looks like a good place, a good start for the allocation of these funds. And, and I'm comfortable with the fact that if something pops up, we can, we have the ability to reallocate where we need. But I think this is a good start in the right direction.
Okay, Mr. Shue?
Trying to get-
You're muted, you're muted.
What about now?
There you go, okay.
Uh, no, I don't have any questions other than Mike, what'd you do with my lights on Garfield?
Actually, uh- Then Shue, the, the estimates that I ran through our power and light were fairly minimal. It's like you said, there are poles there already in a lot of, lot of places. So rather than commit, we're hoping to get this done for around forty-five thousand. And that could come out of our C I P or decultivation fees. So it's still there, sir.
Okay, good job Mikey.
I, I think this is a good start, looking at it. And I think that the, the one question I have Mike, and I don't know if this is true or not, but they said that when we got the money for the swimming, to, to build a swimming pool from Goko, Colorado, that we were tied, that we were not to do anything else to cover the swimming pool or do anything else, major upgrades to it for a period of like so many years. Was that true or not?
So Mayor, I know for a fact that when it was designed, we designed it for a cover but couldn't afford it. And I know that Goko does have stipulations like on our soccer fields and such that we dealt with Goko money, that you can't change the use of the field. I don't think this was, this covering the pool would not change the use. But before we do anything, I will verify because yeah, we definitely don't need Goko coming down on us to want their money back as we change the use. So I will verify.
Well, the only other concern, and I know you brought this up as well, uh, with the swimming pool, uh, you know, it, it's okay to go ahead and possibly cover it. Uh, my concern is, uh, like a lot of the other buildings that we have, uh, going up and that we've, that have been built, we start off with one point some million dollars. And I think we need to try to get a good foothold as to what those costs could actually be with it accelerated cost if it takes two or three years, uh, to do this. Uh, so I think we need to really take a look at it. And then the other thing that we need to take into consideration, uh, after it's done, is to be able to support that pool, uh, with heat year in and year out, uh, staffing. So I think that is a, a major concern that I have and I'm sure council is going to have. So we, we're going to need some, some, uh, projections of, uh, costs, I think, before we actually get into that, uh, because that is a very big unknown at this point in time. Just, I'm sure, the questions. If not, all vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Kedoff?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item seven, seven A, public hearings. Seven A is a public hearing for consideration of an ordinance appropriating certain monies, certain sums of money out of the revenues of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, two D three, and meet, meet the liabilities of the city of Trinidad for the fiscal year, January one, twenty twenty-one, and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. Said ordinance being termed, uh, the annual appropriation bill for the, for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. And, uh, Cheryl, I'm going to defer this to you after I open up, but that amount, just for everybody's information, uh, is forty-seven million, one hundred thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars. And Cheryl, I think you have some amounts that you could probably read into the record as well. So please, I'm going to open the meeting with that. Uh, Cheryl, do you want to take it from there, please?
Um, yes, council, this is the final reading of the two thousand twenty-one budget, where we have appropriate, or where council appropriate fourteen million, four hundred and nine thousand dollars, excuse me, fourteen million, four hundred and nine, two hundred and one thousand dollars for, um, the general fund, eight million, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars for power and light, water fund, five million, seventy-nine thousand dollars, six hundred and eighty-six dollars. Gas fund, three million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Oh, I apologize. I'm reading the first reading. And Mike warned me to have my stuff ready. Sorry. Okay, let's start over. Uh, general fund, fourteen million, five hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars. Power and light fund, eight million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. Water fund, five million, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, four hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. Gas fund, four million, eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. Sewer fund, two point, two million, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars. Landfill fund, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. Capital fund, the capital projects fund, ten million, twenty-six thousand dollars, twenty-six thousand and twenty-four dollars. And then lottery fund, one hundred and nine thousand dollars. Tourism fund, three hundred and two thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Um, so we've had some increases in some of the funds and some decreases. Um, quickly, we increased the general, and these increases are o- increases and decreases are over or under, uh, the first reading. We increased the general fund by about ninety-eight thousand dollars. Um, and that has to do with the resolution that's coming forward this evening. I'm sorry, I take it back. That has to do with staffing that's been added. We were able to determine if fam- or if employees were coming on with health, or with full family health insurance or if they're coming on a single. And then we just cleaned up, um, a little bit more of our expenses. We decreased power and light fund by eleven thousand dollars. We increased the water fund by three hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that's relative to the AMI project, the meter project. Um, cur- originally, I had everything budgeted in two thousand twenty, but there may be a few expenses that are going to be transferred into twenty twenty-one, as well as the water sewer grant, which we were able to have extended. And we anticipate about six hundred thousand dollars in work to complete that grant in the water fund. We increased the gas fund by nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for the exact same reason of the AMI meter project. We had projected to spend all of that this year, um, for the meter project. But we need to move it forward to next year because gas fund's barely getting going. Um, they just received their meters at the first part of November, so those expenses will be recognized in twenty twenty-one. We decreased sewer by seventy-five hundred dollars. We increased landfill by seventy-one hundred dollars. And the most significant increase is in our capital projects fund. It's increased by one point five million dollars. And that's relative to grants and projects that are, were intended to be completed in twenty twenty, but will be moved to twenty twenty-one. And Commissioner, or Councilman Shu, the forty-five thousand dollars have been appropriated for the LED lighting on Garfield in the capital project budget.
All right. Okay. Anything else, uh, Cheryl?
Nope, that's it. I, I do know that Audra, um, scanned some corrections on the council's drive. They were just minimal corrections. They didn't change budget overall figures, but they're just little tweaks here and there, um, some typos. Actually, Mayor found one typo and then a couple of other things for your review. And those will be enclosed in the final budget package.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Valentine, do you have anything to add?
Uh, not at this time, Mayor, other than, uh, I appreciate staff's hard work on this, especially, uh, Cheryl, but all the staff for, for the work they put into it and council for bearing with us, you know, as we worked through a couple of COVID things. And we started early, but here we are, uh, mid-December. So I appreciate everybody's hard work on it. That's all.
Okay. Uh, going with council, Ms. Griggo?
I have no questions just now. But accolades for staff. I mean, for us to be in this position, it's wonderful.
Okay. Uh, Mr. DeBono?
No questions, sir.
Okay. Ms. Ogletree?
No questions. Great job.
Mr. Goodall?
No questions. Great job, Mike and staff, Cheryl, everybody, for your hard work.
Mr. Shu?
Uh, no questions, but great job. Super job. Really good.
I thought you'd give a big thumbs up for your life.
I did. I, I thought it was a great deal.
Uh, I said I, from, uh, I spent, uh, a good time, amount of time yesterday, actually, with, uh, Mr. Valentine and Cheryl going over the budget, had several questions. They were able to answer them. Uh, she and, you know, Mike and staff, they've done a tremendous job. It's quite an undertaking every year, uh, with everything that's going on. Just want to say, Mike, thank you and Cheryl and to all the staff for the amount of work that you've put into this. And, uh, I actually called Cheryl up today and just asked her one simple question. I said, Cheryl, do you have any, uh, concerns about any parts of the budget? And she said, no. So with that, she is the expert, uh, and I, so I'm, I feel good about it. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, say, uh, Mr. Valentine, and I'm sure Cheryl probably pressed this, is that the unprecedented time that we are living in today, that we still need to, uh, be very conservation oriented with our budget. Try to save money where we can because we just don't know, even though things seem to be going in the right direction with the vaccine and all. But I think we still need to, um, go on the side of, of preserving, uh, anything that we possibly can, uh, in case something does happen to blow up. So, uh, is there anyone that is listening in that wants to speak for or against the, uh, ordinance?
Um, Mayor, I, this is Cheryl. I did forget one point. Um, the very first page of the budget for the general fund, statement of revenues, expenses and changes in fund balance. I did record, um, the possibility of council approving the commitment of funds this evening. So if you take a look at that, you'll see that, um, the city projects and fleet were recorded at seven point one million dollars as committed funds, along with one million dollars for compensated absences and three hundred thousand dollars for Eagle Rock subdivision. Um, I forgot to mention this to you, but if you take a look at it, you'll see that our projected ending fund balance is three million dollars, which in, in, in addition, there's an additional three point five million dollars for the fund balance reserve policy of twenty-five percent. So just, just FYI, um, this cleans it up a little bit, shows that the funds are committed. And when the budget goes to press, uh, your resolution will be included in the package.
Okay. Uh, I've not had anybody, it looks like, speak up, uh, that is listening in to speak for or against, uh, the ordinance. So with that, uh, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Go on to seven A one, which is the second evening, eh, second reading of an ordinance appropriating certain sums of money out of the revenues of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, two D three, and meet the liabilities of the city of Trinidad for the fiscal year, fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty-one, and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. That ordinance being termed the annual appropriation bill for the twenty fiscal year in the amount of forty-seven million, one hundred thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars. Could I have a motion, please?
No.
Second.
Second.
Any other con- discussion from council? Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Kedoff?
Yes.
Griggo? Griggo?
I said yes. Yes, yes.
Yes.
Shu? Shu?
I'm muted, Frank. Okay, yes, my vote.
Rico?
Yes. Onto item seven B, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance, amending the city of Trinidad's annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on one-one, twenty twenty, ending, uh, twelve-thirty-one, twenty twenty, to the amount of fifty-one million, one hundred thousand, fifty-six dollars. Hearing is now open. Cheryl, do you want to bring us up to speed on this, please?
Um, yes, council, there are no changes from the, the first reading of this, um, ordinance. This will be amending the budget by three million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. And this is to capture additional expenses that we realized throughout the year, actually expenses and transfers.
Didn't you say that we were able to increase that due to the additional revenues that we received? Is that correct?
Well, absolutely. Um, a significant transfer is the one point, one million, one hundred and forty thousand dollar transfer to, um, out of the general fund due to marijuana, um, sales tax collection. And that was to, uh, for the purpose of space decree common and Noah's Ark, the purchase of land for, at the landfill and then the city hall HVAC upgrade. But that is correct. It's due to increased revenue.
Uh, Mr. Valentine, do you have anything to add, please?
Not at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Council, uh, Ms. Griggo, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Mr. DeBono?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Ogletree?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Goodall?
Nothing for me, sir.
And Mr. Shu?
Uh, nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay. I have nothing. Uh, so, uh, is there anyone in the, uh, that is listening in to speak for or against the ordinance? Not? Close the hearing. Item seven B one, second reading of an ordinance amending the city of Trinidad's annual budget for the fiscal year, fiscal year beginning on one-one, twenty twenty, and ending twelve-thirty-one, twenty twenty, in the amount of fifty-one million, one hundred thousand, fifty-six dollars. Could I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion from council? Call vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Kedoff?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Rico?
Item C, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance authorizing and directing the implementation of the city of Trinidad COVID-nineteen Emergency Assistance Program number two. First reading of an emergency ordinance, uh, authorizing and directing implementation. Let's see, well, let's see. Directing implementation of the city of Trinidad COVID-nineteen Emergency Assistance Program number two. Emergency ordinances require only one reading for, uh, we are trying to authorize another five hundred thousand dollars for this. Could I have someone to introduce, please?
I will introduce, sir.
I'll introduce.
Okay, have a motion. Second. Second. Okay. Uh, discussion, Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. At council's direction to, uh, try and assist businesses affected by the COVID pandemic, uh, they directed me to get together with staff and, and try and put together a second relief package. Uh, what we have is another five hundred thousand, uh, that is, uh, assigned to this, uh, relief package. Um, with this program, staff, um, had a good discussion and, and we want to, this time around, accelerate the benefits being granted into a one-time allocation. Um, the, the last time we did it, over three months to try and help bridge the gap. Um, a lot of things have happened over the course of this pandemic and, and we feel that the businesses, uh, would benefit better with a one-time, uh, package. Now, what this includes is, um, for three months of utility bill credits and a one-time fifteen hundred dollar cash stimulus, stimulus. Um, we've had some businesses that didn't make it through the last one. We've actually added some businesses. So we'll have a quick application process, but, uh, we want to get this to the businesses as quickly as possible so that, uh, moving forward, they don't have to worry about, uh, you know, utility bills for three months and actually get some, some cash in their, in their pockets for just the bills that, that come along. We're trying to stay open. We also, uh, that's four hundred thousand for businesses. We also, um, also offered the tier-two, uh, package that is for those that may have been laid off, uh, due to the level red, um, that had to, businesses having to close. Um, so that, that is, that's out there also for individuals. Um, with all that being said, and, and not knowing how long this level red is going to last and with other issues we have on the agenda, there is still the possibility of, uh, some more funding that is, should council decide to, uh, continue this. We're hoping that this accelerated program really, uh, pushes the businesses through and, and, and helps them out. And with that being said, I'll answer any questions council has.
Okay, let's go take, uh, let's go and start with, Ms. Griggo, do you have any questions?
I do. Um, Mike, is there anything in the?
I do. Mike, is there anything in the application for businesses that clearly define what a good, business in good standing is? Because we've had questions about that in the past. Does it, does it describe or explain what a good, a business in good standing is?
Well, it was, it's hard to vet that. We, as staff, will, I promise council, will take a look at that and how it's worded. I apologize, I don't have that application in front of me. But yeah, we do ask that it's a business in good standing, and we could make sure we define that a little better as they fill out their application.
Thank you. I just, I just don't want any confusion.
Okay. Mr. DeBono?
No, I just, I don't have any questions. I just want to say that it's, I think it's great to get out that allocation of money and utility credits for the businesses that are hurting right now.
Okay. Ms. Ogletree?
I, I agree. I think it's a reasonable approach, and I like the idea that people's power won't be turned off as we're in a really difficult season coming up. So thank you for the work on that.
Okay. Mr. Goodall?
Great job, staff, on streamlining this. I think it's going to cut down on the amount of work for you. Give them the three months credit and some money right away. I really like it. Good job.
Mr. Shu?
Yeah, I agree. Good, great job, Mike, and let's get it out there and get them going.
Okay. Mr. Valentine, I just wanted to say as well, I think that this is a, we're very fortunate that we're able to do this to help our business community. So I think, like I said, congratulations to, and thank you for, you and staff for doing all the work. I know it's a tremendous amount of work, but I think they're probably doing it simply because they know it's, it's a good thing that we are able to do this. The only one comment that I want to make sure is that any businesses that receive this money, they need to be open. Because I believe there were one or two businesses the last time that received money that never, they were never open. So I believe that they need to be open if they're going to get any of this money.
That's true.
Okay, that being said, call vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. We have nothing on item eight for unfinished business. Item nine, miscellaneous business. Item nine B, first reading of an ordinance authorizing and directing the implementation of the City of Trinidad COVID-19 Emergency Assistance Program Number Two, and setting a public hearing for consideration of said ordinance at 6:00 PM on January the 5th, 2021 for the $500,000. The reason for the, another reading on this is because we do have to approve it because an emergency ordinance expires after 30 days. So I need someone to introduce, please?
I'll introduce, sir.
Have a motion?
Still moved?
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo? Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. On to item nine C, resolution committing, make sure I got my ducks in a row here. Item nine C, resolution committing reserve funds held by the City of Trinidad. Could have a motion, please?
Still moved?
Second? Could have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, Mr. Valentine, do you want to bring that forward, or do you want Cheryl to talk about that?
Uh, mayor, so I think we have a little bit of a, you know, we moved the resolution committing funds to item 6A so that it was done before the budget ordinance hearing. So this appears, Audrey, this appears to be a duplicate. So I, no action is required here, mayor. The council already
Okay.
Did that with 6A.
6A.
Sorry for that.
All right, let's go ahead and go on to then item nine D, consideration of 2021 to 2023 General Services Union contract openers. Could have a motion, please? Still moved? Second?
Second.
Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, mayor, members of council. So we have three considerations for union negotiations. Every three years, we have a contract opener where, where by administration and union get together and negotiate a contract. In this general services contract, we have a 5% wage increase, broken down as 1% to their 401K, and then the employees receive 4%, but have to match that 1%. So it brings their contribution up to a total of 5% to their retirement. I think that's good. The holidays observed, union requested that the Good Friday and Christmas Eve, we usually have a half day off. They requested that they get full days in exchange for Columbus Day being removed. So we agreed to that. Sick leave and funeral leave, they requested that it be for also not just immediate family members in the house, but for persons living in the household and the employees, the primary caregiver and power of attorney. So we came to agreement on that. And then some minor language changes where we still had sports and rec called out, and we had the city maintenance garage is now called fleet, and our sports and rec is now parks and recreation. Street and bridges changed to public works. So that was just language cleanup. And then during negotiations with the police contract union, we agreed for an extra day of funeral leave from four to five days, and we increased reimbursement for gym membership from $20 a month to $30 a month. We, just all these changes are built into the budget that you just approved. This just ratifies the contract for another three years. I'll answer any questions, or I could defer to Donna who was with me in all the union negotiations also, if she has anything to add. But I'll take any questions the council has.
Uh, before we do that, Donna, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, mayor, I think Mike wrapped that up pretty good.
Let's go ahead and take some questions from council. There's any, Ms. Griggo?
I have no questions.
Mr. DeBono?
Uh, no, sir, nothing to add, sir.
Ms. Ogletree?
I was just curious, the name changes, does that change anything about who's answering to whom, line of authority, or anything like that?
No, it doesn't. It was a few years back, a previous city manager changed the names, but it never got into the union contract. It does not change any of the hierarchy.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Goodall?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Shu?
No, no, no questions.
Okay. Call vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item A, item E, consideration of 2021 to 2023 fire department union contract openers. Could have a motion, please?
Still moved?
Second?
Second.
Mr. Valentine?
Uh, thank you, mayor. If you recall, the fire department changed from the ASME union to the IFF local six. So a lot of that language needed to be changed and fixed. The, they will also get the 5% wage increase, broken down with that percentage to their retirement. Fire is a little bit different in their retirement, but we, it's a 5% overall increase. They brought this forward, which we appreciate. On their funeral leave, they had the language set for working days, similar to general services. But the fire department works odd shift, so four working days would have gave them, you know, they worked one on, two off, one on, two off. They would have been off for a couple weeks. So they brought it to our attention and asked, and we agreed to two shifts. It's better language for them. And yeah, so, and then this is a, we'll be bringing the fire department, this is the final year for class and comp, so we will bring them into alignment with firefighting market rates. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Uh, any questions? Ms. Griggo? Mr. DeBono?
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Ogletree?
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. Ogletree, did you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Goodall?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Shu?
No, nothing.
Okay, I have none either. Call vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item F, consideration of 2021 to 2023 police department union contract openers. I was going to ask Mike, we, I guess they have some unfinished negotiations on that. Mr. Valentine, do you want to brief us on that before we call for a motion?
Sure. So I'll just go over the same as, as before. We had an overall 5% wage increase, similar to all other unions and departments. The, during negotiations, the union asked, the police union asked for 12% hazard pay during the state of emergency, and we recognized that, but we needed more, more information. And as of today, we, we agreed to carry this over to the 2021 negotiations or sooner as we receive more information. So that, they agreed to that, so we can move on with that. Then there was some title changes to the animal control and community service and code enforcement. And they would also receive $250 clothing allowance, typical to all other non-sworn personnel, general services and such. The same thing with the sick leave, as far as household and employee and primary caregiver and power of attorney. Currently, officers receive $500 for weapons reimbursement. This will remain intact, and an additional 500 will be reimbursed for purchase of new weapons every six years. Just to give council a little bit of a briefing on that. Thankfully, they don't have to use their weapons in the line of duty and firearms that much, but they do have to go through gun range practice, and they're, of course, their sidearms are fired a lot at gun range. So they feel like every six years, it's, it's a good thing, and we need them to have those tools that they need. And then we also agreed to a one-time reimbursement for, in the event that the officer's gun is confiscated for evidentiary purposes. We agreed to the one-day funeral leave, adding that from four to five, gym membership, as mentioned before. We've got a memorandum of understanding with them that they asked for the city to indemnify officers based on the Senate Bill 20-217. And we really wanted to address this via a resolution or ordinance through council, should that come up, rather than put it in contract language. There's been a lot of back and forth. There's been some lawsuits with other communities. We really need the officer, the Senate Bill 20-217 to settle down and figure out where, where this is headed before we do anything. So we, we agreed to take a look at that in a memorandum of understanding, not put it in the union contract, and they were good with that. And there were some language changes where we added a couple additional certifications. So with all that being said, today we finalized everything. Everyone signed off. So I think we're good to go with a couple of memorandums of understanding to continue to look at those, those items.
And for council's information, I talked to Mr. Valentine on this, and the reason why I asked him to brief us before I called for a motion, because there was some unfinished language in the contract that they, was unresolved, and evidently they've got that resolved at this point in time completely. Am I correct, Mr. Valentine?
That is correct.
Okay. So with that, I need a call for a motion, please?
Still moved?
Second?
Second.
Discussion from council, Ms. Griggo?
No questions.
Mr. DeBono?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Ms. Ogletree?
Questions, thank you.
Mr. Goodall?
I do. So if we're going to buy them a new gun every six years, what happens to their old guns? Because I know at some other police departments and stuff, given they are larger municipalities, those guns go out and they auction, sell them off. Are the officers just going to keep their old guns and receive a new one, or what happens?
Well, that's a, that's a darn good question. We did not consider that. I'm going to say that that's a, that's a great suggestion, and I will have to run it by, by them. It is part, I mean, there was purchase for them, for the tool that they use. So I would say that if the officer would like to donate that back and auction them off, we'd have to figure out where, where that funding goes and such. But I don't have a direct answer for you.
I don't mean to throw a monkey wrench and everything. I was just curious, because in the past, I had bought guns off them auctions and stuff. So I didn't know if they had a plan in place for that. That's all I have.
But, mayor, this is Donna. If you don't mind my saying, when we reimburse the officers for their weapons, that, that does typically not pay for the entire weapon. So the weapon, it's not like the weapon, we purchased the weapon. It's still, they, they buy it, and we simply reimburse them for a portion of that, which right now sits at 500. But typically, that is not enough to cover the price of a, of a weapon. they, they buy it and we simply reimburse them for a portion of that, which right now sits at five hundred, but typically, that is not enough to cover the price of a, of a weapon. So, I would anticipate that those weapons remain with the officers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, Donna. Okay, Miss, uh, Mr. Shu?
Uh, no questions.
Hey, Donna, and, uh, you know, I, I think Mr. Goodall brought up a, a, a really, uh, it's a real big question. Uh, Donna, could you tell me what the cost of a piece or, you know, what it costs them typically on the high end?
Okay, so I would say on the high end, you're looking at, I, I mean, they're telling me that typically, they're no less than seven hundred typically, um, closer to nine or a thousand dollars, depending on what type of weapon they buy. We talked briefly about standardizing what weapons the police department want to carry, so that everybody has the same weapon, which would take the same ammo and the type of thing, but that's difficult to do because everybody has a different comfort level and a different hand size, and so it's very difficult to standardize weapons. And so, after a lot of discussion, we decided to just continue with the reimbursement program. So, they are still out of pocket, I would say anywhere from three to at least five, six hundred dollars, um, of their own.
Um, my concern with that, and Mr. Goodall brought up an excellent question, is that, uh, you know, if you put them on the market to, uh, you know, sell them, uh, are they going to end up in the wrong hands of somebody that's gonna be used illegally? Uh, that is a concern that I have, because when it goes on to a private auction like that, you never know where they're going to end up at. I don't know if it would be a good idea to, uh, maybe, uh, pay some difference of what maybe the actual usage of the gun was, uh, and maybe reimburse them at a little bit higher level. Retain the gun to allow them to use for practicing purposes. Uh, I, I just, that's just a, an idea that I have. I just, guns, uh, in the wrong hands can, can end up pretty quickly, and we just don't know. So, anyway, and that's, there is a consideration, Mr. Valentine. Uh, Mr. Downs, do you have any questions?
I do, and Mayor, I just want to say, I mean, that is certainly the last thing any law enforcement official wants, is to have, um, like, the criminal element, for lack of a better term, um, in possession of more, uh, you, you know, illicit firearms. And, and I understand exactly what, what your concern is. It, it's very important, though, i- is Mike and, I think Donna alluded to earlier, they do train with these weapons a lot, and they tend to wear out, and they don't obviously want to have an unreliable, um, handgun when they, when they need it. And so, they've been asking for a long time for this, uh, this money to be able to buy, uh, you know, to have money to buy a new handgun every so often. So, I, there are many rules that apply to being able to dispose or sell of a firearm, and, uh, I, I think they are appreciative of being able to have their old gun if they are able to, with this five hundred dollars, be able to buy a, a new gun. So, um, I, I just think we don't need to worry about what they're going to do with their old, their old sidearm, because they, um, will ensure that they either keep it or it's disposed of safely. I'm sorry for talking so much.
Okay. Uh, and Mr. Valentine, uh, of course, uh, cause these officers, they're, they all come, uh, become employed at different times, uh, so every six years, you know, we have so many officers out there, I think twenty-six or so that are actually licensed with firearms, if I'm correct. So, every six year or every year, so many firearms, uh, are going to have to be replaced. Uh, have you included a line item budget, or has the police department included the line item budget for, have those new purchases in the budget?
Yes, Mayor, that, that is, uh, anticipated to be in, in budget, and, and we did have that discussion also, that, um, cause it was, okay, are we gonna buy these all right now, one time upfront, and then every six years? But, uh, we landed on, you know, based on their, uh, years of service and when six years comes, um, they'll get the new one. So, it's spread out over many years. Um, unfortunately, uh, the past couple of years, uh, nobody, we're not making that six-year mark, so, um, hoping to, to help, uh, retain some of these officers and, uh, you know, grow some experience on our force. So, yeah, uh, we have talked about that, and I know counsel is, uh, making some good suggestions here, but I would say that, uh, both, uh, staff, administrative staff and the union have signed off on, on this portion, so changing now would cause this to table this, and, and then we'd have to come back to you, so, um, just wanted to mention that.
Okay. Well, I think you just answered all of our questions, uh, so with that, call vote, please?
DeBono? Mr. Mayor, can I say something first?
Sure.
Okay. I don't think, I think what we're hearing is the registration of the gun might be an issue other than the possession of the gun. And I'm thinking, if the city's reimbursing it, then the officer's registering that gun under his personal name, so I can't see any problem with that. I think we're fine just the way it is.
Okay, good point. That is a good point. Any other thoughts?
Say something.
Okay, go, continue with the vote, please.
I was gonna say-
Mayor, point of order.
I was gonna say- We don't have registration of firearms in Colorado, so that, you know, that's not an issue. And I just think it sounds like, from what Donna was saying, that as a general practice, they consider these firearms their own firearms. They don't consider them belonging to the department. Am I wrong about that, Mike?
Well, you are not. They, they consider them theirs, correct.
Okay, so it would be odd if we were saying to them, you need to sell them or give them back, reimburse the department, because they're considering them their own firearms. Okay, that's all.
Any, any other thoughts or comments? Okay, go ahead, continue with the vote, please.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo? Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item G, resolution supporting the Los Angeles County Variance Protective Program and requesting approval thereof by the Colorado Department for Public Health and Environment and Governor Jared Polis. Uh, this item here was brought to us, uh, late, uh, because the county is going to have a ver, a resolution as well, and they asked us to bring one forward. Uh, I don't know if counsel, uh, has or no had had an opportunity to read it yet, uh, but with that, I will call for a motion, and we'll proceed with some other stuff on this. Call for a motion?
Vote.
Hello?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Uh, discussion, Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, members of council. Um, because of the level red, uh, restrictions that were put into place, um, and, uh, there are being options for variances, Mesa County, um, has actually been in a pilot program for, um, several weeks, and, uh, Commissioner Felix Lopez, uh, called this to the attention of not only the county, but, uh, city, who attended several meetings on developing what's called a five-star state certification program. Um, the, it was a pilot project for Mesa, and the, the state, um, is, was, uh, we were all waiting for direction on whether or not we could implement it. Um, and I apologize, it, it's so fast-moving that I, that, uh, there, we just got today, um, uh, five-star state certification program that I sent out in an email to counsel, and then we listened into a discussion with, um, CML and the, the Health Department, uh, CDPHE, uh, I think the CDC was on there today, and tomorrow, I believe, is when they're rolling out all the, uh, program. Uh, what it is, the best of my ability to explain is that, uh, we can have our own five-star certification program with the Health Department, uh, the county, the hospital, the city, all on board, where five businesses can, uh, self-certify. Now, when I say self-certify, they, businesses can't just, um, say, hey, we'll, we'll follow all the rules. They have to be certified through the Health Department, uh, and, and the program. Uh, the big thing here is, this resolution, um, does not commit us to anything, but just says, we will, uh, work with the county, the Health Department, the hospital, uh, CDPHE, to try and develop, uh, this five-star program to help our businesses. Um, the first step is, uh, an administrative committee that has to be formed with, uh, you know, all the partners involved and, and, uh, local leaders. Uh, one of the key points is the, the, uh, Health Department Director oversees this, and so, um, there's a lot of work to be done. Um, the, like the mayor said, the county, uh, I found out that they did pass their, um, resolution today. Um, hopefully, uh, city council considers this tonight, and then, uh, from here, once we find out the direction required from the state, um, we, we've got this in place where we can, um, move forward to help the businesses try and self-certify. Um, seems like there's a lot of regulations that, that needed, and hurdles that need to be, uh, taken care of. One of the big ones is, um, the staffing for the Health Department to, uh, go out and possibly monitor everybody who says they're, uh, following all the protocols. Um, that's kind of a brief rundown of, of what I know. I know it's, it's not enough, but, uh, we, we will find out more, and, and Mayor, I know that, uh, should you want, I know that, uh, Commissioner, I think two of the commissioners are on, uh, on the call tonight, but, uh, I will try and answer any questions, should counsel have them.
Uh, Mr. Lopez, uh, you know, if you're on, do you have anything in addition that you'd like that? I'll go ahead and allow that, if you wanna speak, uh, to anything that maybe Mr. Valentine has missed? Does Felix Lopez?
I don't see him on anymore.
I guess he mu, he must have left, okay?
Well, and there's also, uh, Mayor, uh, know that Luis was on through, Mr. Lopez.
Hi, can you-
Lopez, go ahead.
Can, can you hear me, counsel?
Yes, you can.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I'm, I'm in transit, so it might be a little loud. Um, but yeah, we, we as the county did, uh, pass this resolution, uh, today, just for counsel, um, information. There are a lot of particulars that have not been resolved yet. Um, we are expecting, hopefully, through the governor's office and CDPHE, within the next day or two, some clarification regarding the five-star program. However, uh, the commissioner's office thought it would be better to be proactive, uh, and moving forward to be ready if we were allowed to do such a variance on behalf of our community, but it was, it was gonna take the entire community, city, county, hospital, and public health, uh, along with our, uh, Chamber of Commerce with the Hispanic in the Trinidad, Los Angeles County as well, in moving forward. So, we, it is a, is a proactive measure, um, to be ready, uh, if this is allowed to move forward, and it's a preliminary, um, activity to, uh, situate us so we can be proactive for our businesses, uh, moving forward. Now, Garfield County has a motion on the table to look at here in the next couple of days regarding making exemptions, uh, or, or making their restaurants and bars as, um, businesses that are non-exempt. Uh, however, they have not voted on it as of yet. Uh, so there's a lot of irons in the fire right now. Felix, uh, Commissioner Felix Lopez gave us a lot of information today regarding CDPHE and, um, all the information moving forward. Uh, but again, this is a proactive measure for all of us to collectively be on the same page, to help our businesses moving forward and, and and getting ready to, uh, be productive, uh, for anything we can do for our community. So, that's the long and short of it, uh, regarding this measure that the county put forward, and, uh, it won't go forward any further if we all are not collectively on board. So, again, this is a, uh, a, a measure that we were thought would be proactive in case we are allowed the opportunity to move forward. Thank you.
Okay, let's go and get some, get any questions, uh, from counsel, Ms. Griggo?
I have no questions. I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, this is probably something really good to consider. I, I'm really, uh, concerned about businesses, especially in downtown Trinidad.
Okay. Uh, Mr. DeBono?
No, just, uh, thank you and, uh, keep staying proactive. Okay, Ms. Ogletree?
I think it's worth considering, and I think especially if it's based on, um, whatever scientific information that our Public Health Department has been able to determine about how the virus is spread in our community. Because I think what we're finding is that the more dangerous, um, occurrences are in close family relationships and groups where there's no social distancing and no masking, not so much in our businesses. So, I like the thought of, let's think about our city and Los Angeles County in particular, and, and try to address, um, to, to understand the fact that it's not the businesses, it doesn't appear to be the businesses that are causing the, the issue, but I'd like to also see a commitment from the wider community to doing a better job about social distancing and masking, um, in public.
Good thoughts. Uh, Mr. Goodall?
Yeah, I attended the meeting when this was all discussed, and you know, less than one percent of the spread of coronavirus is done at restaurants. Those is the, the statistics that are out there, so it's a very small amount spread to, uh, the restaurant setting. I think the main hurdle that they're gonna face on this is the ventilation, uh, requirements, as Mr. Phelan commented on it. With his new, new building, he barely qualifies, so I think that's gonna be a major hurdle for some of these businesses in Trinidad with these older buildings, trying to get this ventilation in, but I think that we need to get behind this and support this, and, uh, try and do something to help these businesses, uh, get open back up for sure.
Mr. Shu?
No, I'm, I'm in full agreement. Anything that, uh, would help, and, and I think we should be proactive, too.
Uh, you know, I listened in on that, uh, call today, uh, with CML and, uh, Mr. Goodall, just, uh, in kind of answer to your question, I brought that up in a chat, and I asked him, uh, just exactly that, what about, how do we help these businesses that, uh, don't have windows or don't have a mechanical, a mechanical way to, uh, circulate the air? And, uh, they said that there's going to have some, uh, re, some recommendations that will be coming out, because that is, uh, going to be, be a big issue, uh, with some of these businesses that have restaurants in basements or bars in basements, and these type of things. So, it's a, uh, there's a lot of work, uh, that has to be done, like Mr. Valentine was, was saying, uh, but I think we, not I think, but I realize that we need to try to do something for our local businesses to try to keep them open. Uh, I hope, uh, just like Ms. Ogletree says, that they, that they, uh, would, uh, themselves, uh, take it upon themselves to, uh, be proactive and do what they are- take it upon themselves to be proactive and do what they are supposed, what they are required to do so they are not shut down along the process at all. Because if somebody gets shut down, it could put the entire, you know, the entire five-star program in jeopardy. So I think that we need to make sure that they're all, everybody is understanding and willing to cooperate. So I believe that this is a good thing. We've had calls, I've had calls from different people in the community. We've had letters on both sides of the, some that want to have more restrictions, some that want to have less restrictions. So we're kind of caught in the middle as to what the heck do we do? But I think this is a good step forward and hopefully that we could make this work. I see Bill Knowles is, are you wanting to comment? I guess not. With that, a call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Uh, yes.
Rico?
Yes. Ms. Lopez, would you, could you read the resolution into the record, please?
Yes. A resolution supporting the Los Anamos County Variance Protection Program and requesting approval thereof by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment and Governor, Governor Jared Polis. Whereas on December 3, 2020, the Colorado Department of Health and Environment, CDPHE, informed Los Anamos County that the county would be moved to COVID dial, COVID-19 dial from Level Orange to Level Red commencing at 5:00 PM on December 7, 2020. The county lost its variance from certain public health order restrictions when it was moved to Level Orange. And whereas COVID-19 Dial Level Red requires the county to implement further restrictions across many sectors as described in Section 2F of the CDPHE's Public Health Order Number 20-36 as amended. Significantly, such restrictions include, but are not limited to, the closure of bars and the provision on indoor dining and the reduction of gym capacity to 10% of the facility's capacity. And whereas the severe restrictions imposed by Level Red based on a previous similar order will be devastating to numerous small businesses located in the county and the city of Trinidad, many of which strictly follow the COVID-19 protocols to operate safely. And whereas while the City Council of the City of Trinidad endorses CDPHE's orders disallowing businesses from operating in an unsafe manner during the pandemic, the City Council believes to further restrict or close down businesses which have a proven track record of complying with the health and safety protocols required by the federal, state, and local public health authorities, where there is no evidence that virus transmission is originating or being spread from these businesses. This does not further the goal of mitigating the virus transmission in Los Anamos County. And whereas the City Council of the City of Trinidad recognizes the plight of small businesses during the pandemic and has committed over 1 million of funding to provide economic relief grants to businesses, nonprofit organizations, and residents. And whereas, even with financial assistance from the city and other governmental organizations and entities, many small businesses in our community still face the looming possibility of permanent closures and loss of livelihoods. And whereas Mesa County has developed a variance protection program, also referred to as the Five Stars Certification Program, that allows qualifying, qualifying businesses who demonstrate a commitment to following certain health and safety protocols to operate at 50% capacity in the exemption to the Level Red restrictions pending the state's review. And whereas the City Council of the City of Trinidad is in support of the Los Anamos County Board of Comis, County Commissioners desire to develop and implement a similar variance protection program in the city and countywide as soon as practical to allow responsible, responsible small businesses to continue to operate at a capacity that will allow them to maintain their livelihood while the county is in Level Red of the COVID-19 dial. And whereas the City of Trinidad is committed to working with the Los Anamos County and the Los Anamos Huafno Department of Public Health and Environment to develop a meaningful plan to be submitted to the state for approval that would allow the owners and employees of contiguous businesses who are suffering due to the reduction and/or shutdowns to continue to operate under less restrictive rules. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Trinidad, that the City Council hereby directs the city manager and or his designate to work with the Los Anamos County Board of County Commissioners, the Los Anamos Huafno County's Department of Public Health and Environment, Mount San Rafael Hospital, and other interested parties forthwith to develop a variance protection program for Los Anamos County that would allow qualifying small businesses to continue to operate under fewer restrictions while maintaining public safety during the period. Los Anamos County is in Level Red of the COVID-19 dial. Be it further resolved, that the City Council of the City of Trinidad hereby requests upon its finalization that the Los Anamos County Variance Protection Program proposal be immediately submitted to Governor Jared Polis and the Colorado Department of Public Health and Department for consideration and approval. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon passage introduced, read, and adopted this 15th day of December, 2020.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. And with that, we move forward and see if we can get some help for the local businesses. On to item nine, council reports. Ms. Grego?
I don't have a report, but I do have a request of council and the mayor. I would like us to consider foregoing any meetings between the Christmas holiday and New Year's holiday. Staff has been working really hard, and these meetings are really very complex and time-consuming for them to get all the documentation. So I ask if council agrees that we forego that meeting and allow our staff to enjoy to as much as possible the extent of the holiday. That's it.
I think, like I said, our first meeting would not be until like the first of January. So basically what you're asking for is that we have a two-week lead or some, a two-week time with meetings. And the only meeting that we would have would be next Monday, correct?
That's right. We, I'm, yeah, I'm just asking that we forego the work session, which we could have had on the 29th.
Okay. Okay, I'm, I don't have an issue with that.
Thank you.
Council, anybody in council have an issue with it? Okay. Mr. DeBono, do you have any, anything to report?
I don't this week, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Ogletree?
Um, at, at your request, I attended the Pueblo Southeast Colorado Regional Meeting with the AG in Heidi Williams to get information about what the state is proposing to do with the opioid settlement. And those meetings continue. And so for continuity's sake, I'm going to keep going to them and I'll report back. But basically what the AG's office is trying to do is to come up with a way that best serves this region and provides the services that are needed so that people in opioid treatment can be successful. So I think it's a good group and I'm pleased to be part of it.
And if you would, next week, if you would, Ms. Ogletree, if you could kind of give us kind of a final report of what you came up with, if the community readiness, community readiness?
At the work session, sure.
Yes. Okay, do that. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Goodall?
Um, I did have a question for Ms. Ogletree. Did they come up with a settlement or are they still just working on the settlement?
It's still, it hasn't been finalized, the amount, but they think it will be about $400 million. Maybe a little more at the beginning. And then there are other phases later on, but the, the first tranche is going to be about $400 million.
So that's across the country or just to the state of Colorado?
No, just Colorado.
Oh, wow. All right. Well, those are good numbers. All right, thank you, Ms. Ogletree. I don't have anything to report. Okay. Mr. Schu?
No, I don't have anything at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I was, I listened in last week to a conference call with Senator Bennett. And of course, there is, there are concerns with, of course, with this COVID-19, the rollout of the vaccine, a vaccine that's coming out. There's a lot of concern with all the wildfires that we have had this last year. So there were, you know, there was a lot of questions and answers that went wrong with that. And he is going to continue to have, I guess, these town halls like this periodically. And when I do hear one, I will try to listen in. I also attended a, it's not the Southwest Chief Commission, but there is a Colorado Rail Association that's out there. And this takes into account not only from Colorado, but Montana, Utah. There was somebody on there from California and just the overall rail systems. There seems to be a lot of hope with the new administration coming in. Because as, I'm not sure how many people know that the president-elect Biden is actually called Amtrak, Amtrak Joe, Joe Biden, because that's what he did. He rode the Amtrak train for many, many years. So I think they feel like he will try to press forward some funding to Congress and hopefully the Senate for passenger rail. So that's something that I think that we can try to look forward and hopefully get some money in here too. Last night, we had the first public Fishers Peak Engage, public engagement. There were, I don't know, 40, 50 people on the, on the call, a lot of questions. And there's going to be another call later this week that people can call in. And it's going to be a Q and A. The first one last night was more of a, there was some Q and A on there. Most of it was just laying out the procedure of public engagement. So we go from there. The other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, periodically and recently, we, we've had two or three employees, longtime employees that have retired. And I think it would be a good gesture from council that, you know, we, you know, give them a letter signed by all of council thanking them for their service to the city of Trinidad. I think it'd just be something good to do. And for, and we've had, maybe we can backtrack on two or three of these employees that have recently, that recently retired. So if you, Mike, if you want to take that upon yourself to direct someone in the staff to do that. Another thing I wanted to bring up is that even though we still have quite a ways to go with the Fisher Peak Project, but what has brought us here has been the Trust Republic Land and Nature Conservancy, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, of course, Goco Colorado, Department of Natural Resources, and of course, the, the governor. And I, I think it would behoove us to maybe have something printed up where we as the city of Trinidad thanking them for all the work that they've done to get the, this project going, the benefits that, you know, because it's going to benefit us, and I think it'd be good for us as city council to thank them. So I'll talk to Mike a little bit more if council doesn't have any reservations. But I think it'd just be a good, goodwill gratitude to do that for these people that have really done a lot of work for us. Any questions on that? If not, reports by city manager, Mr. Valentine?
Um, no, Mayor, it's been a busy couple of weeks here and the, the agenda proves it. I mean, we had a pretty heavy agenda and I appreciate council's consideration of everything. The only other thing is, last night I was on that call for Fishers Peak and they kind of left us hanging in there. Maybe you heard more. But in their studies of flora and fauna, they said, and maybe I heard it wrong, but they found a species that exists nowhere else in the world, is what I heard. And then they let that drop and, and you couldn't ask questions. And man, I want to know, I know Trinidad is unique, but wow, that's, that's amazing. And anyway, that's all I have, Mayor.
I, I think you're right. And as a matter of fact, I, I think that, Mike, when is, when is that Q and A? Is it tomorrow night or was it?
Oh, I believe it is, Mayor. Um, I believe it's tomorrow night. I'll send out another reminder to council.
Okay. Because that would be maybe a question that you're going to get on to ask them. You know, give us some more detail on that, but.
Yeah.
They are finding some very unique things. As a matter of fact, there was a picture that Crystal Driling and there was this tree that was a U shape and she was sitting right in the middle of that thing. It was just real small. I mean, I, that was very unique. I'd never seen, I mean, all the years I've trampled through the mountains around this area, I've never seen anything like that. So it's a very unique property. So they're finding out some very unusual things up there.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes.
The meeting is Thursday evening from 6:00 to 7:00 on the question and answers.
Good, thank you. I couldn't remember what it was. All right. Mr. Downs, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. I, I was going to say, we've got to know what that spe, that species is. It got to know. I can't, I can't, what I, I would like to say, this very scientific graph just came in. This is the popularity of Councilman Grego that just going up for that suggestion earlier. I'm sorry. But also really, the only thing I have to report on is that I will send you a memo updating you on the negotiations on the Noah's Ark leaks. And I will, I will do that tomorrow. We have been working on that and I don't want you guys to think that we've forgotten about that. We do have some developments. Everything is good and positive. But I will send you a memo on that subject. So that's all I have. Thank you.
You know, I think Ms. Grego is bucking for the most popular council person of the year.
I know, but we need you guys to try to compete. Don't give up. Those staff-friendly suggestions, keep those coming in. Don't, don't give up.
Mr. DeBono, did you have a question?
No, I was just going to tell Mike, I, I had a 25-minute interview on the radio with Crystal Driling and she didn't mention anything about a new species, but I'll tell you what, she was a great interview. Everybody wants a copy of it. I can email it to you.
Okay. Uh, there's nothing else? Motion to adjourn?
Done, moved.
Second. Second. Go vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Good night and thank you for, everyone for listening in and thank council for their good work and staff for all the excellent work that you guys have done on everything. So we'll see you next week for the final work session. Good night. Good night, everybody.
Good night.